Call this January 8th, meeting of the County Commission to order. First order, first just comments, Commissioner Bethard's away on business tonight, so I'll be chairing. First order, first item on the agenda is the invocation, the pledge with Commissioner Jones to lead the prayer and Commissioner Hayes to lead the pledge from the 1st District. You'll please stand.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the blessings that you have given us, and we thank you for the blessings that you give each of us for living in this great county and this state of Tennessee and in this great country, the United States. We ask that we go about our business tonight, we do so with our constituents in mind and vote for the things that are best for them and for this county. We ask also that you be with each and everyone that serves, be with them and their family as they serve us in our county, and we ask that you have blessings upon them in the coming year and upon each of us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've got 22 present with one absent, Commissioner Bethard absent. But Commissioner Nations isn't.
Vacants.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. If you don't mind, I would like to ask that we change the order of the agenda and have the election for the open seat of the 6th District at this time, please.
Have a proper motion, have a second.
Voice vote. Are there any objections to moving up the nomination for our NPC? Seeing none, so there's a voice vote.
Coming back to Commissioner Webb, do you have a motion for the nomination?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for tonight. I have the nomination of David O'Neill. He's, lives in the district, and he has submitted his application properly. I think everyone has seen it. He's talked to many of you. I hope you've had a chance to read David's resume. He is currently a captain of the Brentwood Police. He served as a deputy of the Williamson County Sheriff's Department. He is an attorney. He's helped our local prosecutor's office in cases with the city of Brentwood, and also he at one time was a K-9 officer. So, he has a good resume, lot of good support amongst the community in Brentwood, and I urge your support for his election tonight.
Proper motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, having a motion and a second. Must be vote on the machine or vote?
A voice vote. You have it loaded?
All right, so we'll do this with a voice vote. All in support of Mr. O'Neill fulfilling the vacancy, say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right, record the vote. I see Mr. O'Neill, Commissioner O'Neill, congratulations. I believe Mayor Anderson's gonna administer the oath.
Come on, steal that right hand, brother. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, David O'Neill solemnly swear that I will perform with fidelity the duties of the office to which I have been elected and which I'm about to assume.
And which I'm about to assume.
I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of Tennessee and the United States and to faithfully perform the duties of the office of County Commissioner representing the 6th District of Williamson County, Tennessee. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Just thank you for your service to our community. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Including your packet, each of you should have received a copy of the minutes. Are there any corrections or mistakes that need to be addressed? I see none, all in favor of approving. Can I get a motion for approval of minutes?
Got it.
I see this. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Tonocleff and a second from Commissioner Smith, all in favor of approving the minutes. Say it. Please press the yes button on your iPad. Mr. Ruby, you've recorded the vote.
22 yes, one abstain.
Next item on the agenda is citizen communication. We have five speakers tonight. Just as a reminder of the rules, there's a three-minute limit to speaking. First, please state your name and either the city or the district that you reside in. The first one tonight is Kim Cannon.
Good evening, thank you for having me, Kim Cannon, Franklin, Tennessee. Good evening, Mayor. I have a cheat sheet. I'm not a great public speaker, but I appreciate everyone who is here for me tonight. I am here representing Sister Cities of Franklin and Williamson County. I did pass out packets when we were here in November. No, there is no quiz. We operate as a group of citizen volunteers and citizen diplomats. I invite those of you at home watching to look up our website, sistercitiestn.org. We'd like to highlight a few things that you as county commissioners have helped with and could help with in the near future. First, thank you to Bradley Boshers at the Williamson County Archives, his help set up Aspects of Nature exhibit at the Archives. It will be here through March 1st. This exhibit is from our German sister city. Michael Hine is a descendant of Alexander von Humboldt, known as the father of ecology and environmentalist. We encourage you all to visit. Please take in the films. It's free to the public, and we hope the teachers of Williamson County and students will stop in and visit also. This Saturday, January 13th, we'll be hosting our Celebration of Nations at the Williamson County Performing Arts Building. Many thanks to all the staff for their help with our performers and tickets. This is our third time holding the Celebration of Nations at your, our beautiful Performing Arts Building. We're happy to showcase it. We're also hosting a young artists and authors competition from January to March. We will select three winners from five categories to send to the Sister Cities International Competition. This year's theme is "Climetscape: Resilient Cities for Tomorrow's Future." That is chosen by Sister Cities International. Now, what I'm here for is this plaque. We are thrilled to share that we have reestablished our relationship with County Leash, Ireland. Some of you may know Cheryl Wilson, who sat on this commission, and now she sits on our board. She wasn't able to travel with us this September. We traveled, I'm a page mom also, between the Coffee County win and the Glencliff win to their plowing competition. They have an international plowing competition with tractors. It was amazing. I could go on and on about it, but I'm not a good public speaker. Aren't you lucky? We already made connections through Matt Horstman, the Tennessee Ag Extension, Friends of the Library, and others. Please contact myself or Diane if you know of someone in your community that would be willing to be part of the Ireland delegation. We hope you all had a chance to appreciate the needlework outline of Williamson County that is hanging in Mayor Anderson's office. It was made by Mount Elick Embroidery Heritage Museum, similar to our archives. We didn't get to say that last time. It was made on behalf of County Leash and presented to the citizens of Williamson County as a goodwill gift. This evening, we are presenting to you the county seal that was presented to us in September, which we didn't get a chance to pass on in November. Mayor Anderson presented their county council members with a Williamson County, Tennessee seal, which hangs proudly in their front office. As soon as we, the delegation walked in, we right away recognized the county seal. Thank you for listening, and we hope you take in some of the wonderful things that Sister Cities is doing here in Williamson County.
Hang this up in the office, Dave.
Next speaker is Eric Allison.
Eric Allison of Franklin, Tennessee. Last year, the WCC presented a proposal letter requesting County Commissioner approval for the purchase of an all BMD touchscreen system, and the WC provided reasons why they thought the hand-marked paper ballots were an issue. At the December 5th State Election Commission meeting, we provided 10 specific points detailing the WCC's inaccurately cited sources and mischaracterizations related to hand-marked paper ballots with an optical scanner voting system. We feel the WCC violated their oath, the code of conduct, and the mission statement. One example is the Election Commission's May 4th letter that stated, "Studies have shown that the error rate of recording true voter intent with hand-marked paper ballots to be as high as 5%. Duda said that this was a reason why he could not recommend hand-marked paper ballots." The WC letter went on to say that BMDs have less than a 1% error rate, and Commissioner Tonocleff used error rate in his closing statement when voting yes for the BMDs. However, this WCC's footnote is sourced for this 5% hand-marked paper ballot claim states that using hand-marked paper ballots in precinct is an advantage because the optical scanners actually alert voters of errors so they can be corrected at voting time. The source discusses a 4% error rate for the central tabulators like absentee voting, but that's irrelevant for precinct voting. But why was central tabulation 4% in this cited source? Because there was an aberration of 34 Senate candidates running on one race, and the ballot did not follow best practices. But even with this issue, that same ballot in the precincts only had a 1.1% error rate. When you're removing this aberration, the article states, that was sourced by the WCC, the error rate was only 0.7%. This is one of the various examples of the WC inaccurately citing sources and mischaracterizing to support their recommended all BMD touchscreen system. Why would someone do this? Election officials have known about self-correcting adjudication for over 15 years. Spending our taxpayer money appropriately and dealing with our plus $1 million, billion dollars in county debt requires managerial courage and ethical people. We will email the County Commission the document we provide to the SEC, and we request your support to write to the SEC requesting new, ethical, informed, and unbiased election commission representation so you can fulfill your number-one priority of allocating taxpayer funds. Thank you.
Next speaker is, I think, I believe it's Catherine McKinnon.
Here are just two examples where the WCEC presented mischaracterizations.
If you please state your, uh, city or district, please.
Oh, Catherine McKinnney, Franklin. Here are just two examples where the WCEC presented mischaracterizations and inaccurately cited sources as reasons why hand-marked paper ballots are bad and ballot marking devices are the better system. The WCEC said that the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine's 2018 consensus study recommended BMD systems as the better option. However, the commission failed to mention important points from that study, which refutes that argument. On page six of the study, the National Academy confirms, quote, "Elections should be conducted with human-readable paper ballots or BMDs." Then it goes on to say that "human-readable paper ballots are, in fact, the standard." It also says, quote, "By hand-marking a paper ballot, a voter is, in essence, attending to the marks made on his or her ballot. A BMD-produced ballot need not be reviewed. Furthermore, it may be difficult to review a long or complex BMD-produced ballot. This has prompted calls for hand-marked paper ballots as opposed to BMD-produced ballots whenever possible," end quote. In another instance, the WCEC claimed, quote, "Ballot box stuffing on a large scale is not a hypothetical risk," end quote, and therefore it couldn't support hand-marked paper ballots." The WCEC cited, quote, "Over 750 documented cases of casting ineligible ballots were recorded by the Heritage Foundation," end quote. However, in reading these 1,100 total recorded cases, it revealed cases that included felons voting, people in multiple states, people trying to vote twice, impersonations, but none of them addressed the hand-marked paper ballots used in polling locations, which is what was being discussed in both the meetings and the letters sent by the WCEC. The WCEC failed to inform the County Commission that many cyber-experts agree and strongly support hand-marked paper ballots over BMDs, which is what we've been saying to the WCEC for several years now. The flagrant use of misinformation likely confused county commissioners. You can't be informed on everything, right? You have to trust the WCEC to provide complete information. The erroneous citation of data is deeply troubling. This situation needs to be publicly investigated, the infringing commissioners removed, and future election commissioners better vetted. We urge you to review the Citizen Truth Review and immediately act upon this critical situation. Thank you.
Next speaker is Elise Farrell. Please state your, state your name.
Elise Farrell, Franklin.
I inherently trust our Election Commission, yourself, and Chad Gray. Now, I'm sitting here listening to our community at the same time I trust inherently in our Election Commission. I trust you guys. I think your intentions are pure, but at the same time, it's not what we're hearing from the community at the moment, and what we've got in front of us may not be adequately addressing it. You know, I think if you go back in the pandemic, if you talk about our school board and the mask vote that was going on, there was a scenario where our school board was listening very closely to the healthcare community and saying it's safe to mask and that type of deal, but they missed an opportunity where the community was speaking pretty loudly, but they just didn't want it. And, you know, there's been some consequences on the school board, probably for some of those stances they took.
So, this was not meant to single out Commissioner Williams. It's just that he verbalized what many of you already think, and that is that the WCEC is inherently trustworthy and that they have pure motives when they present proposals to you. You've just heard from two constituents that provided information to you, and will give you more information, that shows that this commission should not be blindly accepting what the WCEC says and shouldn't be making its decisions solely based on the content that they receive from the WCEC because they will skew information and mischaracterize information to get their desired result. So, just like the example given by Commissioner Williams of the mask mandates, this commission should be listening to the community. In the area of voter integrity, your constituents not only have significant personal experience, many have done a substantial amount of research, and some true experts in the field have provided you information that was ignored in favor of the WCEC's biased information. I want you to remember that the WCEC is appointed. They are not accountable to the public. We just have you guys. So, if you don't help us and you don't, and you don't make them accountable, then we can't. So, I'm asking you to contact the SEC and tell them you feel like there's been some stuff that needs to be investigated here, and if it turns out to be accurate, then things need to happen because the only people that are gonna hold them accountable is the SEC and you. We can't do it.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. There's a lot of things y'all should listen to me about. Next speaker is Laura Turner.
Good evening and Happy New Year to you all. New Year's resolutions are made with the firm determination to do something good. My resolution is to save a magnificent tree endangered by Franklin's approval of St. Paul's Church subdivision site plans, and to do so, I resolve to educate and encourage cities and counties to adopt effective preservation-protection ordinances for legacy trees before they are gone. Legacy trees are trees of an older generation that persist in a younger forest, and the ecological benefits of these trees are many. Legacy trees can also have a historic or cultural value, botanical interest, or be of record size. Francis is a legacy tree. I'm trying to save, and he is the largest male pecan tree in Tennessee. Decades ago, Williamson County animals suffered cruelty neglect due to lack of education regarding sheltering, spaying and neutering, and the recognition of the intrinsic value animals unconditionally give us, enhancing our quality of life. Today, we have one of the most effective and heartwarming animal centers in the country. It took hard work and many voices to raise awareness and advocate for the welfare of our county's animals. Legacy trees need our voices now. People from around the county have been commenting with growing concern about the overwhelming amount of clear-cutting being done in the past several years. The ecological impact of this tree loss adds up, causing problems with stormwater runoff, wildlife habitat loss, erosion, pollution, and the loss of the priceless amenities legacy trees provide to neighborhoods and communities. At the beginning of this new year, I respectfully request that this County Commission's Resolution be to resolve to create an advisory group dedicated to initiating measures to identify and protect one of our county's most vulnerable and valuable resources, our legacy trees.
That concludes citizen communication. Next item on the agenda is communications and messages. We have a couple of proclamations and a couple of announcements.
That our live feed is not working right now from a constituent.
They are not like hearing you, so I'm sure they're working on it, but typically it gives the cable provider and not us.
Okay, okay, that's just showing still the splash screen on the YouTube channel, so I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Continuing on communications and messages, we have a couple of proclamations and a couple of announcements. The first being a proclamation honoring the Page High School football class team, being presented by Commissioners Herbert, Commissioner Hester, Commissioner Lawrence, Commissioner Stresser, Commissioner Sanford, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Clifford, and Commissioner Steve Smith. If y'all wanna come to the front, we'll make the proclamation.
All the commissioners are coming down to get the Page High School, the coaches come forward to come down, and I understand one of you is a communication specialist. That'd be you. Who's, who's gonna read all these?
Our missus of communication.
All right. So, we have got several names here we're going to read, but let me read this into the context, and then I'll let you go through the names. Would that be all right? Whereas the 2023 Page High School football team had achieved the outstanding accomplishment of advancing to the state champion for three consecutive years, and whereas in 2021, the team achieved the title of Region 6 5A champions, first time in school history, were state runner-ups. In 2022, the team achieved the title of Region 6 5A runner-ups, losing to county rival Nolansville High School, and were again runner-up in the state championships. Whereas in 2023, the team achieved the title of Region 6 5A champs, advancing to the state championships, where they became runner-up in a down-to-the-wire finish. And whereas the Page High School football team members and coaches are, you take over.
Freshmen Preston Ashmore, Jonathan Baba, Dakota Bryce, Ryder Casillas, Caleb Kaufman, Colin Mulek, Liam Perry, Elijah Pimental. Cadence, sophomores, Cadence Ackerman, Wyatt Beletti, Colt Brown, Luke Brown, Matthew Briska, Grady Kayson, Levi Sissel, Will Clutch, Tyson Cobb, Sean Cunningham, Owen Ford, Wyatt Heck McGinnis, Finn Hemstrat, Braden Hicks, Emmanuel Johnson, Logan Kepner, Thomas Lee, Cadence Marshall, Dabs Matthews, Maddox Morgan, Hudson Myers, Jacob Rathbone, Porter Robbins, Cadence Sanders, Gavin Thayer, Jordan Wells, Night Wilson, Daniel Woollock, Colton Zolke, juniors, Stephen Acklin, Brendan Ains, Will Blair, Justin Bruce, Grayson Chisholm, Connor Kaufman, McLean Copeland, Presley Cozart, David Flores, Eric Hazard, Austin Johnson, Reese Lomenick, Harrison Lewinsky, Aiden Merlin, Auckland, or, help me. Justin Orland, Connor Poe, Isaac Power, Aiden Roots, Gavin Rush, Michael Stanley, Jonas Stanton, Eli Whitson, William Weebush, Michael Woollock. Seniors, Hudson Amerson, Omarion Anderson, Cole Barnett, Lincoln Campbell, Zane Cannon, Tyler Casillas, Henry Kayson, Ethan Cunningham, Pacey Darnell, Jack Hager, Andrew Jones, Calvin Cartoba, Kyle Kowalski, Ryan Kowalski, Dylan Ledford, Caleb Meeks, Gian Minardi, Ronan O'Connell, Jonathan Palmer, Ashton Titsworth, Cadence Walker, Gabrielle Varney, and Cole Wallace. Do you want me to do coaches?
Sure.
Okay, no, you can do the coaches.
Go ahead.
Okay. Coaches Charles Rathbone, Kurt Ames, Travis Dumkey, Jay Emmons, Jason Hoth, Stephen King, Dylan Lindville, Bobby Magna, Jerry McClellan, Miller Polk, Sean Temple, Stephen White, Shane Williams, and James Wolf.
Now, it be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners tonight, in their regular session on the 8th day of the January, do hereby designate this 2023 Page High School football team and recognize the level of excellence and exemplary collective as a team for three consecutive years. Congratulations.
That's an impressive run. Our next proclamation is honoring the 2023 Brentwood Blaze C Division Blue Team, being presented by Commissioner Paul Webb, and I see some members of Brentwood Blaze, if y'all would like to come forward as well.
Get the Blaze and the parents up here.
I guess I'm solo.
Your name's on it, but happy to invite your compatriot.
Come on, guys, I'm not gonna bite. Come on up here. Golly. Not that big. Congratulations. Let me read this to you. This is a pretty big deal. Williamson County proclaiming and honoring the 2023 Brentwood Blaze C Division Blue Team. Whereas the Brentwood Blaze C Division Football Team is the Whereas the Brentwood Blaze C Division Football Team is the 23, 2023 TYSA District Champions, and whereas the Brentwood Blaze C Division Football Team is the 2023 Tennessee State Champion, and whereas the Brentwood Blaze C Division Blue Football Team is comprised of seven and eight-year-old boys, and whereas the Brentwood Blaze C Division Blue Team completed the 2023 football season undefeated without losing a game all season, and whereas not only was the team undefeated, but they completed their season, including the playoffs, championship game, without giving up a single point to any team. And whereas, that's right. And whereas the Brentwood Blaze C Division Football Team and coaches include the following: Weston Bachmann, Wyatt Bollinger, Jude Code, Sawyer Gamble, Gunnar Genovese, Aston Hewland, Henry Curvin, Kyle Lanham, Harrison Moore, Alex Murphy, Andrew Murphy, John Wiley Nations, David Nelson, Joey Pino, Hudson Reed, and Braxton Walker, as well as coaches, head coach Craig Lanham, who I don't think is here. Is that right? No, okay. Assistant coaches Travis Cole, Phyllis Hewland, and Charlie Curvin. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Williams County Mayor and Board of Commissioners hereby congratulates the Brentwood Blaze C Division Football Team for their outstanding season and do hereby recognize the level of excellence exemplified by each of these outstanding individuals in witness thereof, Commissioner Webb, Mayor Anderson. So congratulations, guys, undefeated and unfortified.
Couple of announcements. We have late filed resolutions 1-24-13 and 1-24-14 at the end of appropriations. Do I have any objections from the Commission? All right, see none. Second announcement, late filed resolution 1-24-15 has been withdrawn by the sponsor. So we'll be utilizing the original agenda, not, not a revised agenda, if you happen to receive it in the mail. Also have a request to move Resolution 124-8, which I believe we have some Girl Scouts here today in relation to that resolution, to the, to the first resolution under new business. Do I have any objections to that movement? All right, see none. Believe Commissioner Webb had an announcement.
Two announcements, if you don't mind. One is that I want to make sure everyone is aware that we, as a group, are part of the Tennessee County Commissioner's Association, which is a, a part of the Tennessee County Service Administration. As you may or may not know, I've been involved in that organization since I've been a Commissioner and serve on the Governor, Government Affairs Committee. With the legislative session starting tomorrow, I want everyone to know that they're invited to the Governmental Affairs Committee, which meets Friday, February 2nd, at the Wilson County Fairgrounds at 9:30 a.m. Now, here's the key to that. This is a committee that started off with about 12 of us, we're up to about 200 now. We will vet approximately 300 bills proposed to the Legislature that deal with county government. And the group that's from all over the state of Tennessee on this Friday the 2nd will discuss those and say, we support it, we are opposed to it, or let's watch it. Things like caption bills, we've got to watch them. And so this is open to you, you just have to let our Executive Director, Charlie Curtis, know you're coming, so we've got enough chairs and enough lunch. And so if you don't have his email address, I think I've got it right, you can go on to the website for the TCSA, and you can find Mr. Curtis's email address and let him know you're coming, or let Diane know you're coming, and she can get ahold of him. But the address for the site is www.tennesseecounties.org. This is the Government Affairs Committee of the Tennessee County Commissioner's Association. So you're all invited, and then if you'll get on that mailing list, you will get those list of bills, and as they progress through the House and the Senate, you'll see where they stand and what changes have been made and where our actions are going. So you want to hear what everybody around the state, from Mountain City to Memphis, is saying, this is a chance to get them. And as Commissioner Tonicle found out in Chattanooga, some people don't think we have any problems. And I've been trying for years to explain to them that both Brentwood and Williamson County, we have our problems, they may be different. And the idea is, together, all 95 counties, we can work together, strength in numbers can get things changed. And so I urge you, those of you that can, now this is an all-day meeting on a Friday, I know you can't all be there, but I urge you, if you can, to attend. The second thing, Mr. Chair, if you will, just to remind, I think most of the members have gotten this, the announcement about County Government Day, which is actually two days, February 19th and 20th, at the Capitol. This is a chance to, again, meet with those committees. I chair the Transportation Committee and, and serve on the Government Affairs Committee. Those committees will meet, and we will be looking at the legislation again, and then making trips to the Legislature to share with our representatives as well as others what we think about that. So I urge you, if you can, to attend one or both days. Many of you have, I know amongst the room have been there for one or two days, but you need to make a reservation. Again, go to that website, www.tennesseecounties.org. Let them know you're coming. Diane and Jamie can help you with the registration, if you want to go and be formally registered, but you look on there and see their, their tentative agenda. So I urge you to go to both of these, if you can, or at least try to go to the legislative day for part of the day. You don't have to stay all day, you can go and come. Important things for us to work with our fellow legislators, legislators from around the state and share what issues we have, and maybe we can get some resolution. Strength in numbers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other announcements from the rest of the County Commission? Did get a notification that our YouTube channel is playing the County Commission meeting live, but it's not on the channel.
It's on YouTube Live, but not on the Page channel.
Also want to remind the County Commission that the Ethics Report due to the state is due by the end of the month. The preferred submission is electronic, so please do that before the end of the month. That concludes Communications and Messages. Next item on the agenda is Reports of the County Offices. Mayor Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'll call upon Phoebe to give us a snapshot of the last 60 days here in the county. Phoebe?
I do need to bring to your attention, I inadvertently left out the schedule for the Education Impact Fee. It was not included in your packet for this evening, but you should find one on your desk. One was also emailed to you this afternoon late, around 4:30. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that was not there. That is the first thing we'll talk about, so that way you'll go ahead and have that in front of you. So collections for the month of November for Education Impact Fee was 1,653,524. Total collections for the months of July through November is a little over 8.9 million. The total collections for last fiscal year for the same months, July through November, was 5.3. So we are seeing an increase so far over the last five months compared to the corresponding months in last fiscal year of a little over 3.5 million. This brings your total available for allocation up to $65.3 million. This number we will be looking at closely as we start addressing budget constraints and looking into what we need for our upcoming infrastructure needs, so we can look at that 65.3 million. Privilege tax collections for the month of November are a little over $1 million, and for the month of October was 1.1 million. So we again are averaging a little over 1.1 million for the months of October through November. So for a five-month period, we are holding steady with our privilege tax collections. The county received a profit for both the months of October and November from the Cool Springs Conference Center. October in the total of 77,488, and in November, we received a profit of 20,515. And if anyone has any questions at this time, I'd be happy to take those. Thank you.
Thank you, Phoebe. Unfortunately, one of the acknowledgements I was going to make tonight, this gentleman did not show up because he had nothing on the agenda, and we were trying to keep it quiet. So he didn't show up. But I wanted to let everyone know that Joe Horn is retiring, and you of you know that. And Mike Madison will be taking his place after several lengthy interviews. That will occur. We're having a reception, Diane, for Joe on the 12th. So if you're in the area from 3:00 to 5:00, you might want to stop by. I will at that time present Joe with a proclamation. The final item, Mr. Chairman, that I have, I would ask that you put this date on your calendar, save the date, January the 29th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m., we will convene a committee meeting of the whole in our executive conference room down the hall. For you that aren't familiar with a committee meeting of the whole, that it will include all of you. As, it's not an opportunity to vote, it is an opportunity for the following. There will be two resolutions in the month of February on your Commission agenda that we would like the opportunity to provide information, allow you time to ask questions. These two topics will include an amendment to the zoning ordinance with regard to the telecommunication, telecommunications tower setbacks. And the second item we will be addressing will be the updated proposed growth plans and urban growth boundary resolution. Likewise, because this amendment to the zoning ordinance is up for consideration by the county's Regional Planning Commission, we will be inviting that group to our work session also. So let me say that again. January the 29th, from 5:30 to 8:00, we will have some pizza during that two, two and a half hours. We expect to have different people there to address your questions on the telecommunications, telecommunications tower setbacks that are being proposed to the Planning Commission, and then the year and a half-long proposed urban growth boundaries, how they affect our cities and how they affect our county for the next few years, because you will be voting on those in February. Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got. I'll try to answer any questions if you have them.
I have a couple of questions. First on the list is Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mayor. Just one question, a quick question about the January 29th, would that be open to the public as well?
Absolutely.
In the meeting, or was it going to be?
It's really a work session for you, and so if there are questions, they're going to need to come through you. We've, we've done this several times over the years, you can, you can only address so many people. We're going to refer to it as your meeting, just like here, but you're not voting. So hopefully those questions will be funneled through you prior to.
Next question's from Commissioner Mary Smith.
Ma'am, it's Barb Sturgeon.
Correction, correction, Barb Sturgeon.
Mayor, I was at the budget meeting last week, and y'all voted on the budget regulations, and I really didn't digest it until after that. And I'd just like to understand the logic behind the raise, the 5% raise, and then why another 2% in January? How we pay for it?
So every year, as you know, you serve two years on the Budget Committee, and we give proposals to the Budget Committee. Commissioner Chad Morton is chairing that, to give them guidelines so that we can get that information out to all the department heads, all the elected officials, so that they can start putting those guidelines together to present to the Budget Committee to get to this body. When we doing June this year? We moved it back. So in June. So we give those guidelines to them. Under the capital items, we ask them to use discretion in, in the area that, that I'm responsible for, they'll all come before me ahead of time. Hopefully they'll bring them in on a need basis rather than wants, but it's based on money. And so all of that goes through all of the different departments, the capital, the new hire, the, the new hires that they'll want. Eventually, the HR Committee of the County Commission will approve that, so we'll see those new hires that they're requesting. Under the area of pay raises, this year, to edge some of the high-cost standards that we have at living in our community, we proposed 5% in Ju, on July the 1st, with 2% to start it again on, on January 1 of this year. Over the last several years, we've tried to keep up with that cost of living and tried to get our payroll with all of our full-time and part-time people more in line so that we can continue to hire people when we lose people and continue to retain people so that they don't go to other places. Over the years, you all have adjusted, particularly in the area of law enforcement, the Sheriff's Department, over the last two years that I think of, as we make these recommendations, we see there's a void, or there's a need to fill that, we bring those items to you. So I think I tried to answer your question the best. Did I answer it? How are we going to pay for it? We're going to pay for it out of County General Funds, just like we do all of our pay raises and try to balance out that budget.
How did you arrive at 5% and then another 2%? Why, why not just do 5%? Why another 2% in January?
Well, if you remember this last year, Commissioner, we did that same thing, as I indicated, the school system, instead of doing it that way, we'll, we allowed them, you allowed them, to do a 6%, 5 and 2 average, that's 6 for the full year. It's just a mechanism that we, there's some, the employees can get some of it in the first six months and get a little bit on the back end, and that saves us a little bit more on the, on the cost side of it, too, from doing our actuarial studies for retirement, Social Security, and all those things, because the New Year starts in January.
Was there some discussion about interest on our money in the bank?
Right.
Is that going to pay for it this year, or pay for part of it?
It's going to make a sizable dent in, in how we pay our employees. Now, I should say, if, if you're not in favor of the pay raises, or anyone, please reach out to us and let us know. But we don't have a mechanism to pay our employees on a bonus system like the private system does. We don't have a performance evaluation system here at all. Years ago, we tried that, and that takes training of all the elected officials, so this is the way. Every elected official has an opportunity to have the input of how they want their employees paid, and this is just barely keeping up with the cost of inflation for employees.
What I'd like to see is some, some kind of cost comparison, maybe with other counties in the area, to say, hey, look, this is what this function gets paid on average in surrounding areas. That's the criteria why we need to make a salary increase. That would help me feel like it was justified. Do we, does HR do that? Do they do cost?
Do comparisons, we do cost analysis every year. We don't just pull a number out of the air. Would you like to?
I would love to see those numbers, yeah.
You like to help us get those numbers from other areas or make another change we can? We're just trying to move that process along, Commissioner.
Well, I think it's important.
I don't think 5% is overpaying our employees.
I think it's important that we stay competitive. We pay our employees, I just, I would just like to see the data.
All right, next speaker we have is Commissioner Mary Smith.
Hi. So congratulations to Joe, I guess congratulations to Mike. So now that Mike's position, I guess, is going to be vacant, has there been interviewing for his particular position at this point? Do you think you'll have an announcement on that, who's taking over for Mike anytime soon?
So at, at the present, Joe is still employed there. As soon as that- As soon as that spot opens, Mike moves in and we'll start recruiting for Mike's.
Okay, so by next, probably by next commission meeting, maybe, hopefully.
I doubt we'll have it, but we might. At that time, we'll, I let, I let the department heads go through that. They will bring me the final three, but they work under Mike, not under me.
Would that be an open job position?
All jobs are open to the public.
Okay. And I just want to kind of like, I guess, echo Commissioner Sturgeon on the, the pay increases, because I definitely know there's areas across the county where we do want to see folks get paid more, especially in our law enforcement and in our teacher, in the educational area. There's, you know, want to see those teachers get paid more. But I guess if there was any sort of analysis on, you know, why the, just across the board, pay increase versus certain departments and certain roles within those departments, how we just kind of come up with that, that number, it would be helpful just to understand where we're limited and where we have, you know, more capability to address some of the lower paid and, you know, harder to retain positions across the county.
If I could, Ms. Chairman, follow up with that a little bit. So when we make a recommendation and the budget committee votes on that, which we've done forever, you do realize that includes the teachers? That that 5% and the 2% also goes to teachers?
Yes.
This year, to do a 5% and a 2% under the teacher's pay line is $18 million. I wish I could tell you that we get some, get a considerable amount of money back from the state to help offset some of those pay raises. I don't have the exact number before me. Maybe one of the past budget committee chairs could refresh my memory, but we are in excess of over 600 teachers. We're paying 100% of their salary with no reimbursement from the state.
All direct instructional staff? That doesn't include, does that include central office too? That includes the entire education?
All teaching positions. And, and the reason for that is, and am I right on that? One of the budget chairmen, does that sound right?
The last one I got was 759.
Okay. Does that sound, Steve?
Rachel says yes.
Rachel? How many?
At this point, probably close to maybe 700.
So we have 700 teachers. So let me, let me kind of explain that if I could. In our classroom sizes, the state normally pays 1 to 25.
It varies by grade level, but that's a good average.
1 to 25. Most of our K through, the smaller classrooms are getting into the 20s, because our people have said they learn better with smaller classrooms. So if, let's just say 20, and the state's paying you an average of 4 times 25, and it's 5 times 20, that's one teacher per 100 students, that we're having to pick up the full cost of that. So multiply that times the 700-plus teachers. So when you say you would like to address some people more than others, we have traditionally tried to subscribe to the theory that if one individual gets 1%, that if everyone should get 1%. Now, we've made exceptions to that to the law enforcement community. But the actual pay of all of these, it varies all over the board. We have some people that I remember, was it three years ago, Diane, we actually gave everyone making less than $40,000, which is the bulk of our earning power here in the county. We gave them more per hour. We just gave them a flat dollar array amount, and the upper echelon did not get that, and they were fine with that. But we're just trying to pay what we can do to keep the people here. But we'll, we'll pull some data, but it's, it's not an easy thing to do.
Mr. Herbert.
Mayor, I want to ask a question about one of my favorite committees, the UGB committees. You know, the last UGB committee, Spring Hill withdrew their original request to expand and went back to how they originally were. Have you heard anything from them, if they're going to make any changes to include more property?
Oh, I, I have not heard a vote since it's, if it's gone to the Spring Hill, maybe one of your family, fellow county commissioners is going to address that. But their proposal was to go back and ask for, as you know. Same thing with Thompson Station.
Thank you.
Questions at the moment? Crowd, offering the podium to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. We actually don't have any items on your agenda tonight, so I'll make my comments brief. First of all, thank you for celebrating Page High's football team. Three straight years, making it to the state finals is pretty amazing, consistent success. Got all kinds of stories about it if, if y'all want to hear it. I will say, I spoke to Coach Rathbone and some of the players out in the hallway after you all honored them, and they said the national championship game was going on, so they were taking off. So, so they did leave. I, I do want to make a couple of comments related to pay. We go through this process annually analyzing our competitors, for lack of a better phrase. I will tell you, generally speaking, Rutherford County and Metro Nashville Public Schools are our biggest competitors because they're our biggest competitors, the, the size of the school system we're competing. But we do compare ourselves and our teacher pay and our classified staff pay compared to our competition there. There are some positions that are competitive in the market generally, based on licensure. For example, physical therapists, occupational therapists don't have education licenses, they have medical licenses. And so the, the market varies from position to position. Two years ago, we actually made a substantial adjustment based on an analysis where some of our lowest paid folks got a substantially higher paying increase than some of our higher paid. Last year, we did do a 6% pay increase, but those tend to reflect, reflect what the market is doing at that moment. Final thing I want to mention about that is the governor has announced that by the 2025 budget, July 25, he expects all school systems to have a starting pay for teachers of $50,000. Right now, we are about $1,800 below that, and we're two, we're two budget years away from, from that. So that's part of what we're analyzing right now. And of course, that's zero experience. And of course, then we've got to adjust the, the experience as well. So that's just a little bit of snapshot. Final comment I want to make, I already said final comment, so I'll stop. You have any questions? Okay. Yeah.
Jason, how do you see the vouchers that are evidently going to be forced down our throats affecting our budget?
It's hard to say for us right now. The, the, as, as we understand the governor's proposal, and he's verbalized it, they haven't, they haven't actually submitted any legislation. But the essence of what I understand, he has said, in year one, which is this coming budget year, 2024, he intends to fund vouchers for 20,000 students at $7,075 per student. And then in year two and subsequently, the plan is for all students in the state to have the, have the opportunity to, to get that voucher. So you do the math on 7,075 times 20,000 in year one, the, 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 the impact will be a state budget item. In year two, you're going to have to do the math on how many students are in public schools versus how many students are not in public schools. I've done a little bit of an analysis based on, based on how many we know are in public schools versus, versus the census data on how many children age 5 to 18 are outside of public schools. I don't know that these numbers are exact, but it's probably around 185,000 or so children age 5 to 18 as of 2022 numbers who are not in public schools. From a direct impact on us, it's hard to say. From a statewide impact, it has the potential to be a really substantial new funding proposal. So the, the idea is that someone can choose. I will say we're, right now, we estimate that the state per pupil funding for us is somewhere just a little bit less than 4,400 per student annually, and the proposal is to fund 7,075 per student next year from the state for those who choose something else. So I, I will tell you, from my perspective, this is, the locals have that responsibility to fill in that gap if they're in public schools. So that falls on you all to figure out a way to fill in that gap. So, so that's, that's going to be a challenge on the funding side long-term, I suspect, because there looks to be a potential substantial difference between how much the state funds per student, leaving that responsibility on the locals.
CEO, so we could, please, help.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I'm here today with Mike Genesey, our CFO. I'll give you a brief report on what's going on with our project at the hospital, and then Mike will give you the financial report. So over the last few months, we've been working in two areas really, in the ER, we've been working on nine additional beds, and those nine beds will open up mid-February. And so we'll go from that 28 adult bed count that we've had, even though we expanded the ER, when we go back in and renovate, we've not been able to add beds so far. But we'll go from 28 to 37 sometime in mid-February. From our OB project, as you know, we opened up that new space, which was 11 postpartum beds. We renovated four LDRs, labor delivery recovery rooms, and opened those in October, and we're going to open up another five renovated LDRs this month. As far as the major West Tower project, most of everything on the outside is being completed. You'll see the tower crane go down the first week of February. Everything else that's happening is inside. It's really getting exciting now because the flooring is going in, the ceiling tiles, the wall coverings, the cabinets. And so that project will mostly be complete in June of this year. So that's, it's been a while, but we're really excited that we'll be able to open up the West Tower mid-June. We'll have a, a big community event mid-June, and we'll let you know of that date. We have a tentative date right now, but we'll let you know of that date in the next couple of months. So it's getting, it's getting pretty exciting. The things that'll, and we'll go ultimately from 37 beds in the ER, adult ER, to 43 by June. We'll still have, the NICU will still have to be renovated, which will be done sometime in September, October, and the additional C-section room. Once June happens and we move into the new space, we go back into the existing space and we start the modernization of the existing space, and we'll start with the third floor, which will take us about a year. One other thing that's going on is we have a new outpatient location that'll be opening sometime in April in Spring Hill, and that's about 20,000 square feet of space. It'll have our bone and joint office there. We'll have orthopedic urgent care. We'll have imaging and laboratory, primary care, and rotating specialists through that office. So we're pretty excited about that, too. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike for a quick financial report.
Thank you, Phil. Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, Commissioner and Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. You guys have the report in front of you. November was a pretty good month for us. While our volumes are a little bit soft, our net revenue was strong and our, our net income was strong. We exceeded our budget. We had a rebate that came in to help us out with that a little bit. From a cash standpoint, generated a lot of cash. We had one less cash day in November than we did in October, yet we exceeded October's collections by 2.4 million dollars. Y'all know our debt covenants. We have to have 95 days cash on hand. We have 98.3, so we met that. And from a debt coverage standpoint, required to have 1.5 days and, or 1.5 times, and we came in at 2.75 times. So again, volume's a little bit soft, net income was strong for us. So be glad to answer any questions for you guys.
Commissioner Stresner.
Mike, just a quick question. You had referred to the rebate. Is that the net non-operating revenue?
No, the rebate came in through a rebate to our employee benefit expense. It was from the pharmacy side. Most of that net non-operating is our interest income. So, yeah, so it's kind of hidden in there, but it's in the operating expenses. So it's like a contra expense. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Hey, just real quick, what, what's the operating margin typically for you all in a year? Not, because I know it's going to vary month by month. It's just not on the report and I'm lazy, don't want to go dig for it.
You know, it's, it's varied so much lately because of the pandemic and so forth, but if we can do an 8 to 10%, we're doing very, very strong on that. So, yeah, oh, no mark, yeah, on the net income.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Mike. Do we have any other committee wishing to report may do so at this time? Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I would ask that the library director, Williams County Public Library Director Jessica Jeffers and trustee Janine Merrill come up, because they would like to tell you about an event they've got planned for this month.
Good evening, county commissioners. I'm Janine Moore, and I am on the board of the Library Foundation. The Library Foundation is one of two volunteer groups here in Williamson County that provide funds to help the library. All six of our libraries offer programming and lending items that the community has, has asked for. We held two fundraising events at the Enrichment Center prior to COVID, and then we stopped because of COVID, and we are now holding a third event this year. It is going to be at the library. It's going to be a conversation with local author, J.T. Ellison, and then it's going to be a mix and mingle to encourage people to wander around the library and see the kinds of things we have to offer. Thank you for your support in making sure that this event will be able to happen at the library this year. On your desks, you should have seen an invitation that looked kind of like this. The event is January 25th. It's a Thursday night, starts at 5:30 or 6:00, depending on what kind of ticket you buy. We would really love it if you guys would be willing to buy a ticket and come out and join us and see what the library has to offer. And why we do this, Jessica's going to talk about.
Sure. Good evening, commissioners. I just want to make a couple points about what our foundation does. A lot of people don't realize that we have a foundation, which like Janine mentioned, is our fundraising arm. This past summer, we had over 2,300 people register for our summer reading program, and in turn, they read over 2 million minutes. So this foundation raises money to support that programming, the summer reading program, winter reading program, and other educational programs and special events throughout the year. So we really appreciate, you know, any awareness you can take with you to your constituents and any support that you would give us for this event. So thank you very much.
Moving on to elections and appointments. We have Stormwater Appeals Board, three-year terms expiring January 27. The current terms are Robert Adams Jr., Andrew Reese, John Kenny, with nominations, Robert Adams Jr., George Garden, and John Kenny. Do I have any other nominations from the floor? Are we ready to vote? Or if I can get a motion in a second?
Steve Smith.
I can't see it, though.
I know, she changed it too quick.
Looks like what Commissioner Smith and who was the second? Commissioner Herbert was the second. All in favor of the nominations I presented, press yes. Against, press no. Commissioner Heston?
Yeah.
If you'll record the vote. If you'll record the vote. Mr. Webby.
22 yes, one abstain.
Next, we have the Adjustment and Appeals Board. It's a four-year term expiring in January of 2028. Current terms expiring is Kenneth Choate and John Lee, with nominations for Kenneth Choate and John Lee. Do we have any other nominations from the floor? If I can get a motion in a second, which we've got from Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Tunocleff. All in favor of the nominations, please press your yes button. All against, press no. Mr. Webby, record the vote.
22 yes, one abstain.
Excellent agenda is the Public Administrator, Guardian, and Trustees, four-year term expiring January of 2028. Currently filled by Russell Gill, nomination Russell Gill. If I can get a motion in a second. We have Commissioner Sturgeon is the motion, Commissioner Tunocleff is the second. Is ready to vote? All in favor, press yes. All against, press no. Record the vote, Ms. Webby.
22 yes, one abstain.
Moving on the agenda, we have the Consent Agenda. We have a motion for Commissioner Steve Smith, second for Commissioner Tunocleff. Ready to vote? All in favor, press yes. All against, press no. Record the vote, Ms. Webby.
23 yes, zero no.
Business? See none. All right, moving on to new business. Going back to Resolution 124-8, which we've moved to the front of the agenda. Andrea, if we call you up, as well as the Girl Scouts, please. I will, okay. If I can get a motion in a second. Have a motion for Commissioner Hayes, a second for Commissioner Graves. Let's see, let's read it real quick if I can find it. Resolution number 1-24-8, resolution accepting a donation of a microchip scanner kiosk from Girl Scout troop number 1255 on behalf of Williamson County Animal Control. Andrea, would you like to speak to this?
I'd be glad to. So.
Commissioner Hester, sorry.
Thank you, Andrea. I would like to personally thank the Girl Scouts and their Girl Scout leader for this presentation of the kiosk, not only at our Franklin location, but I understand also in Brentwood. This is very generous. I would also like the county commission to vote for this donation. And Andrea, if you would give us a better explanation, please.
I just, I just wanted to explain how helpful this will be to the community because not only, we interact every day with people who not only are pet owners, but people who find stray animals or have an animal issue of some sort in the community. So this kiosk will be sitting permanently outside of our building. It'll be accessible 24 hours a day to the public, and it, we hope, will also have the added benefit of reducing the amounts of calls for after-hours and on-call service when someone finds a stray animal. If they are aware and they bring it up to the center, they can scan for a microchip and hopefully reunite the animal with its rightful owner without involving any staff time, weekend time, after-hours time, because currently, an on-call officer would be called into the shelter to take that animal in and all of the expense and work that goes along with that. So the Girl Scouts, I know, were trying to help reunite animals, but they had the unintended benefit of also helping us with workforce. So we appreciate you guys. If you're curious about how it works, they were so kind, they laminated the sheets that go inside the kiosk to show you guys how it will work.
We're passing around the information. If you guys are curious as to how the scanner works, it's, please take a look and pass it around. Let me just record this for the minute real quick. Public Health Committee voted 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee voted 5-4-0 against. I have a question from Commissioner Sturgeon.
I was just thinking, it would be great if you could give us the addresses so that we can publicize where these two locations are, exactly like the address of the Animal Control Center and the address of the other location in Brentwood.
So the Brentwood Library will be the second location, and as I understand it, they're working with the city of Brentwood right now to get that finalized. Our address is 1,006 Grigsby Hayes Court in Franklin. And our plan right now is to do a press release. When they bring the kiosk out, we'll take some pictures of it being installed and alert the public through the press that that is going to be available there at the center. Well, we had to wait to get the kiosk until after tonight's meeting, but I know that the kiosk is ready to go, so we'll schedule that ASAP, and I'll make sure that Diane knows when it's going into the paper, so we can send it out to the commission and let y'all know.
I think this is a fabulous project for the Girl Scouts, and I was a Girl Scout leader for many, many years, and this would have been one of the projects I would definitely have picked, so thank you for your contribution, girls.
We're ready to vote. All in favor, please press the yes button. All against, press no. Mr. Webby, record the vote.
23 yes, zero no.
Resolution 1-24-3, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into a grant contract with Tennessee State Library and Archives on behalf of the Williamson County Library in appropriating and amending the 2023-24 library budget by $12,150. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Library Board voted 6-4-0 against, three absent. Budget Committee voted 5-4-0 against. Commissioner Webb.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is a grant for technology from the state, and it does require matching funds, which are in the existing budget. Again, the Library Director is not here, but we do have, oh, they moved sides on me. If you have any questions, they are here to answer any specific questions.
Any questions? We have a motion from Commissioner Webb, a second from Commissioner Tunocleff. All ready to vote? Record the vote, Mr. Webby.
23 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution number 1-24-5, resolution appropriating and amending the 2023-24 Parks and Recreation Budget by $100,336.41. Revenues to come from donations. Parks and Rec Committee 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee 5-4-0 against. Commissioner Webb.
...of receiving donations from those that use our facilities. In this case, the Community Youth Association, the $81,617.21 is the largest, but there are other smaller amounts for those using that, as well as a reimbursement from State Farm Insurance due to damages. If you have any questions, I believe Gordon is here. Yes.
You have any questions? See none. Please ready to vote? All those in favor, press yes. All those against, press no. Record the vote, Mr. Webby.
23 yes, zero no.
Passes. Resolution 1-24-6, resolution appropriating and amending the 2023-24 Parks and Recreation Department Budget by $90,000. Revenues to come from participant fees. Parks and Recreation Committee 6-4-0 against. Budget Committee 5-4-0 against. Commissioner Webb.
Mr. Chair, this is for participant fees for events held at the Performing Arts Center, $90,000, as you can see. And then, again, Mr. Hampton is here if we have any detailed questions.
Questions for the commission? See none. Ready to vote? All those in favor, press yes. Against, press no. Record the vote, Ms. Webby.
23 yes, zero no.
Passes. Resolution 1-24-7, resolution appropriating and amending the 2023-24 Animal Control Budget by $12,234.92. Revenues to come from donations. Public Health Committee 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee 5-4-0 against. Commissioner Hester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you can see, these are donations from various organizations, and these revenues need to be put into our spending for this year. Part of this is going to be used for vaccinations for, through the Vaccinated and Loved Campaign. Thank you.
Any questions? See none. We do have a proper motion of Commissioner Torres and a second from Commissioner Tunocleff. All in favor, ready to vote? All in favor, press yes. All against, press no. Record the vote, Ms. Webby.
23 yes, zero no.
Resolution 1-24-9, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute a contract with the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County on behalf of the Office of Public Safety concerning the 2023 Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Program. Law Enforcement, Public Safety Committee 6-4-0 against. Budget Committee 5-4-0 against. As amended, Commissioner Sanford.
So this is a grant from Tennessee. State of Tennessee is giving out $1.5 million. Williamson County is to receive $210,530. Chairman, if I would, I would like to make an amendment from the floor to where it says, and it be further resolved, the 23-24 Capital Projects Budget be amended as follows. The revenues expenditures are outlined in the resolution, but do not provide the amendment to the Capital Projects Budget. You have in your packet the proposed amendment to this resolution that was left out.
I have a proper motion to have a second of the amendment. All right, we have Commissioner Mary Smith is the second. All right, on, do any questions on the amendment? If we can prepare a vote for the amendment. All those in favor, press yes. All those against, press no. I record the vote, Ms. Webby.
22 yes, one no, but I see Commissioner Landrum. So you like to check.
They were passing these around, so what I need to do.
All right. So the vote should read 23 yes, zero no.
Thank you.
Okay, so the amendment passes. That brings us back to the resolution. We have a motion from Commissioner Sanford. Well, if we go back, we have a motion for Commissioner, a second from Commissioner Smith. Any questions on the resolution as amended? I see none. Ready to vote? All those in favor, press yes. All those against, press no. Record the vote, Mr. Webby.
23 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-24-10, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Military, Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, and appropriating and amending the Office of Public Safety 2023-24 Budget by $85,855. Revenues to come from Homeland Security Grant Fund. Law Enforcement, Public Safety Committee 6-4-0 against. Budget Committee 5-4-0 against. Commissioner Sanford.
So this grant is to conduct Homeland Security training exercises here in Williamson County and to be able to purchase equipment for training concerning domestic terrorism.
We have proper motion for Commissioner Sturgeon, second for Commissioner Sanford. Any questions? All right, ready to vote? All those in favor, press yes. All those against, press no. Record the vote, Ms. Webby.
23 yes, zero no.
Passes. Late filed Resolution 1-24-13, resolution authorizing Williamson County mayor to enter a grant. Did we? I don't have 12 on the agenda.
12's in the other section.
All right, moving back to Resolution 1-24-11. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2023-24 Animal Control Budget by $900. Revenues to come from donations. Public Health Committee 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee 5-4-0 against. Commissioner Morton.
That's a $900 donation from Petco Love to help subsidize vaccines for animals.
We have a motion for Commissioner Sturgeon, second for Commissioner Morton. Any questions? See none. If we're ready to vote? All those in favor, press your yes button. All those against, press no. Record the vote, Ms. Webby.
23 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution, late filed Resolution 1-24-13, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Commerce and Insurance in appropriating and amending the 2023-24 Sheriff's Office Budget by $40,000. Revenues to come from grant funds. Budget Committee 5-4-0 against. Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is state funding for us to send officer candidates to the Tennessee Law Enforcement Academy to offer them tuition assistance. According to Acting Sheriff Elrod, this would accommodate four to six candidates per year, and he is here if anyone has any specific questions.
I have a motion from Commissioner Webb and a second from Commissioner Herbert. Are there any questions? See none. Ready to vote? All those in favor, press the yes button. All those against, press the no. Record the vote, Ms. Webby.
23 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Late filed Resolution number 1-24-14, resolution appropriating and amending the 2023-24 General Sessions Budget by $6,000. Revenues to come from probation fees. Budget Committee 5-4-0 against. Commissioner Webb.
As you can see here, this is where the evaluation drug testing expenses are currently exceeding the budget, and so they are, have sufficient probation fees to offset this expense.
I have a proper motion for Commissioner Hayes and a second for Commissioner Webb. Any questions? See none. Ready to vote? All those in favor, press the yes button. All those against, press the no button. Record the vote, Ms. Webby.
23 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. All right, that completes appropriations. Moving on to other, we have Resolution 1-24-4, resolution to overrule the denial of the City of Franklin Planning Department's action regarding the city's sign ordinance. Property Committee 3-0, no action taken by the Budget Committee. Commissioner Hayes.
I know there was a question of, now I'm drawing a blank, about the sign ordinance and what was the, during committing. Now, was the, drawing a blank. Hey, Mary, don't you remember? It was just basically to see if it passed county. Right, if it was within county code. I know, we're talking about looking that up. I'm sorry, I should have had my notes running.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Kevin Benson, Property Manager. Yes, the, we'll fulfill the same requirements as the county codes. You can change it no more than one time every two hours, four times a day. We don't plan to do that that regularly with a sign. It'll be changed once a day, if that, based on the next major event that's coming forward. For all of you that, basically. For all of you that basically don't know the situation behind this, last three years we've been working with the City of Franklin trying to get this passed. We had to do the same thing with the Ag Parks sign out there. The LED lighting is an issue, and the height of the sign is an issue. So the sign is nine foot tall instead of eight. We had to do that to fit everything on the sign, and then the LED lighting is just something that's not accepted by the City of Franklin, but it's accepted by county codes.
I do have a proper motion by Commissioner Mary Smith and a second from Commissioner Graves. Any questions? Commissioner Mason.
And maybe I struggle with this, and I should or I shouldn't, but essentially, since this is a county building, what we're, you're asking the county commission to do is say, well, since we're a county building, we're going to follow county code and not city code. Do we not set a precedent at that point that if somebody else within the county wants to come and say, well, I don't, the city turned me down, you guys did it for yourself, can't you do it for me? And I guess that's just what I'm worried about, because I understand why we're wanting to do it and need to do it, but if we do it for ourselves, then don't we kind of set ourselves up for doing it for others?
I'll call the council and answer that.
The short answer is no. The ability to override a municipality's planning commission is embedded in the code for the ability to do that and is founded on the principle of sovereign immunity, that the county cannot be restricted by another governmental entity, which is a subcomponent. Only the state can limit the county's power in that regard. So there are two different aspects to it, but the short answer is no. A third-party citizen couldn't come to you and ask you to do that.
No further questions? If we can prepare the vote? All those in favor, press your yes button. All those against, press the no. Record the vote, Ms. Whibley.
Twenty yes, three no.
Resolution 1-24-12. Resolution accepting a donation of an electric push-mat lawnmower on behalf of Williamson County Animal Control. Public Health Committee 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee 5-4-0 against. Commissioner Webb.
This is the Friends of Williamson County Libraries donate an electric push mower to the animal center for their use.
Got a proper motion from Commissioner Webb, second from Commissioner Tunocleff. Any questions? See none? If we prepare the vote? All those in favor, press the yes button. All those against, press the no. Record the vote, Ms. Whibley.
Twenty-three yes, zero no.
Passes. That concludes the resolutions on the agenda. Are there any remaining questions? Any reports? All right, with that, I'll adjourn, if I can get a motion to adjourn the meeting.